Call to order the October 21st, '24 County Commission Meeting. Welcome all of our guests that are here tonight, especially, I think, Commissioner Philip Moorhead, which is here with Leadership Wilson. I know we have some other special guests that will be recognized as we go into special recognition tonight. This time, I'll call on Commissioner Marlowe for the prayer and the pledge, please.
I wanted to, before we get started, I want to introduce to you Reverend Rhonda Smith. She is a young lady that I go to church with. She was ordained and became a community life pastor at Hermitage Church of the Nazarene in Hermitage. Rhonda is the founder and executive director of Rest Stop Ministries, an organization that facilitates the recovery for women coming out of human trafficking. I would like for Rhonda to give you a little information about the organization and how it's connected to Wilson County before she prays.
Thank you. I still call him Mr. Marlowe because both of my sons went through Lakeview Elementary when he was the principal, have been a proud citizen of Wilson County for 37 years now. And I think Rest Stop Ministries is one of the best-kept secrets in all of Wilson County, and so I want you to know who we are and what we do. Rest, Stop, our mission and vision is right in our name: Restore survivors and stop the criminal oppression of sex trafficking and sexual exploitation. And since November of 2015, we have been your neighbor, right here, just in the outskirts of Lebanon. We have 25 acres, two beautiful homes where we run, and I'm glad to see some of you picking up the brochure there. Got one to everybody. We run a long-term residential restoration program for adult female survivors of sex trafficking. And we have three core pillars of our program. The long-term housing and healing program, which is 18 to 24 months, free of charge to these women if they'll just come and do the very hard work of healing. And we say that we serve women with the big trifecta of complex trauma, a mental health diagnosis, and an accompanying substance use disorder. And so those are three big things to heal from. It takes 18 to 24 months. We have a social enterprise where they earn while they learn while they're in our program, a workforce readiness program. And then, after they graduate, we have a full third year of alumni aftercare, where we give them a housing subsidy, ongoing therapy, and ongoing case management. We're getting great outcomes. I would love for you to reach out and ask for an impact report. But we're changing lives, and then those women are returning. Most of them stay here in Wilson County as productive citizens who are working and earning and paying taxes and living right here as your neighbors now. So we're proud of who we are and what we do. And I'm also just really privileged. It's a sacred privilege to get to pray over this group tonight. So shall we pray?
Please rise.
Lord God, we are such a grateful people because we live in a place so wonderful and beautiful as Wilson County, and we live in a place where we can even publicly pray in a meeting such as this. And so we are grateful, and we thank you. And Lord, I am grateful to have the opportunity to pray over these men and women who are public servants, who are leaders in a time when leadership is tough. And so I pray, Lord, that you would help them in their deliberations tonight. Lord, that you would give them wisdom beyond themselves, discernment for the things that they need to work through. And Lord, may we have a spirit of unity, may we find all the ways that we're more similar than different as we just work together for the best solutions for our great community. And God, I just pray your watch care over them, bless them, protect them, bless their families, as again, they work for all the citizens of Wilson County, from the last and the least and the lost, all the way to the wealthy and the powerful and everyone in between, Lord. We know that this group is here for all the people, and we just thank you for that. And we pray this prayer in the holy name of God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
(Inhales) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Marlowe. This time, if you will, press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. This time, we'll have public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to speak for the county commission tonight, if you would step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, one, we will close public comment, and we'll move on to report from the steering committee, Commissioner Fields.
Motion that had a lump of them thrown in, I'm in the wrong committee meeting, that the minutes be received and filed.
Got a motion second. Any discussion from anybody? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Fields.
(Inaudible) Everybody has a copy of the agenda without any changes. I would make the motion that ought to generally be accepted.
We got a motion here, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Consider agenda? There's none, are there? No consent agenda? This time, I'll ask Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Franklin to come forward, please.
Good evening. If I could invite Ms. Debbie Moss, if you would bring your family and anyone with the Bilbury family to join us up here at the podium if you'd like. You don't have to, but you're more than welcome to be a part of us this evening. And while they're coming, I want to say good evening, and I like to echo what the mayor said, is good evening to our visitors, good evening to you at home that are tuning in, watching online. We want to thank you for taking time out of your family and time out of your schedule to be a part of your local government, and it's an honor that you guys are here. Good evening. Hey, sweetheart. Before we get started, I kind of want to call a timeout just for a second and just talk to you just for a moment, if that's okay. I know in our packet that we see that we do have three resolutions that we'll be presenting this evening. And this morning, kind of thinking through the day and talking to a commissioner, it's kind of ironic to see these resolutions and what they represent. I noticed one word, whether it be a resolution for celebrating a birthday of 2025, or 225, celebrating a life that was rescued by a servant of the community, or celebration of life of someone that has passed and went before us. And the one word that I thought about this morning was a word called "life." Tonight, before coming here, just a few moments ago, I finished teaching a class, and I challenged my students, and I asked them, "What is life? Define what life is." And I asked myself that question. And some of you may say that, hey, Justin, life may be the moment you take your first breath, all the way through to the moment you take your last one, and whatever's in between, we're going to call that life. It's a pretty good example. You know, reading the resolution through this of Ms. Sherry, I realize that her life is something that I would like to represent. As you can tell, this family that's up here supporting her, that she touched many people, and she was a public servant in our community. And it reminds me that, in life, we're not only able to celebrate it, but we must have to meet that other word called "death." Many of you tonight have sat under the sound of my voice or have had to live moments in your life that you had to go through death, losing a loved one, whether it be a family, a parent, a father, a niece, a nephew, a grandparent. We always say, "They just went too soon. I wish I had more time." What would you tell that person that's gone before you? So many family members in my mind, and so many friends I think about, of what I would say, or the arguments that were so silly that broke a relationship, what would I say? And I want to challenge, and it's like I told my class, I want to challenge you that five words, simple words that we have in our life, five on our hand that we can count out to practice: "I'm sorry," and "I love you." So hard, so many times, we put ourselves in positions that we let our feelings and emotions override us. And I know that life, with it being so short, that it's not worth it. So let me challenge you, because I'm told in the Word of God that life is just a vapor. It's here today and gone tomorrow. We're not promised another day. We get one shot. We get one opportunity. We don't get an opportunity to hit the reset button. We don't get an opportunity to restart, as you will. So what are you going to do with the rest of your life? Me personally, I want to live it like Ms. Sherry. And with that being said, I want to present this resolution to you guys. The resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring the memory and community service of the later, late, and miserable Sherry Jean Brewington Bilbury. Whereas Sherry Jean Brewington Bilbury was born on December the 16th, 1946, and to the union of the late Sam and Ruby Dedman Brewington in Lebanon, Tennessee. She was the second born of five siblings, and whereas Sherry was married to George Bilbury for 60 years. Wow. They have one chair son, George Richard Bilbury, known as Richie, a wife, Gina Bilbury. She adored her grandchildren, Garrett and Kaylee Bilbury, and her great-grandchildren, Grayden and Riley Bilbury. And whereas, Sherry dedicated over 50 years of her life to serving others. Initially, working and retiring from the TDS, formerly Continental and Tennessee Telephone Company, beyond her professional life, Sherry Bilbury was a respected and cherished friend to countless people. She lived for her family and extended family. Sherry had a true servant's heart. And whereas a beloved member of Mount Juliet Community, Sherry served over 20 years with West Wilson Big Brothers. Serving as her president for much of that time, she made sure no one went hungry and fed anyone in need, along with providing children with toys and necessities and Christmas and shoes. Lots and lots of shoes, and ladies, can I get a amen? And whereas, as a former rotarian of the Mount Juliet Rotary Club and a former member of the Lions Club, Sherry served her community well, and her involvement far exceeded anyone's expectations. Her community showed their love for Sherry by her for the Mount Juliet Chronicle of Women of the Year, Woman of the Year, which she won. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of this County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we honor the memory and the dedicated community service of Ms. Sherry Jean Brewington Bilbury. She will be deeply missed by her family, her friends, and all who have the privilege of crossing paths with her. Her kindness and compassion knew no bounds. Words cannot express how she will be missed by her family. She was truly loved by all. I'll make a motion that this be approved and accepted.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you so much, and Sherry would have loved this. She would have loved it. And Bill Wolfenbarger, I don't know how many of you guys know Bill. He did her, he was her pastor at her service. And at the end, he surprised us with Sherry's shoe crew. And we got the word out, and we're already collecting those shoes now for these kids at Christmas, so in her memory, we got Sherry's shoe crew. And if y'all want to bring them to my office, I got two offices, bring me some shoes, and we'll make sure that they get to the right spot. Mr. Franklin, I know you know Sherry. You want to say anything?
Well, I knew her very well. She was really good friends with our family forever, and she used to be a, my wife owned a boutique in Mount Juliet for a number of years, and Ms. Sherry could bling out, because she came to visit us often. I got to know her. Such a blessing.
She liked to bling.
She would come in every now and then, stop, very busy woman. Miss her.
Okay, thank y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Picture cap.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going to present a resolution tonight. If I could have Kevin and your family come up, would be fantastic, and if your main boss would like to come up here with you, that would be great, too. Or he can sit back there and... Thank you, sir. I'm honored to read this tonight. Kevin may not remember it, but a few years ago, he was detailed in my car quite well out at his house. And so I'm, when Mayor Hutto asked me to read this resolution, I guess when you know somebody, and it means a little bit more. So, "Whereas James Kevin Wolverton was born on February 23rd, 1972, in Nashville, Tennessee, and raised by his grandfather, who played a very influential role in his life. And while Kevin considered himself a wild child, during his early years, he had a heroic spirit even then. His grandfather fell sick when Kevin was only nine years old. Although he was just a child, Kevin took the adult role of his grandfather's caregiver. And Kevin moved to Wilson County around 2000, and in 2013 began his career as a lot attendant at Wilson County Motors. As a jack-of-all-trades, everyone calls him when they need something. His coworkers say no matter the size of the task, Kevin has always got it covered. Sadly, Kevin's wife passed away unexpectedly in 2018. His coworkers were quick to show him the same care and compassion he had always shown them. And on September 4th, 2024, Kevin's ordinary afternoon at the dealership would quickly turn into a miracle. Just up the street, a frantic group of people were looking for a three-year-old girl who had gone missing from a nearby apartment complex. And Kevin had worked slightly later than usual, and he was getting in his car to go home. Two gentlemen asked him if he had seen the little girl. While he had no idea where she was, Kevin was quick to help. Some of the search party mentioned the rock quarry, so he headed that way. And Kevin arrived at the quarry where two women were searching, but they had not gone down to check the water line. Kevin went down to check and found the little girl floating face up in the water. Kevin immediately jumped in the water to retrieve the child and began CPR. Moments later, the little girl, who we now know as Lily, coughed up water and began breathing. And Kevin carried her to nearby members of the search party and first responders. She was rushed to the hospital and since has made a full recovery. Lily is a happy, healthy, happy little girl, all thanks to the man who saved her life. And Kevin's coworkers at Wilson County Motors say it's no surprise to them that he would spring into action as he did to save the little girl's life. They said, "Kevin is not just a herald to us here at Wilson County Motors. He is a herald to our community, his friends, his family, and anyone he crosses a path with." Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize Kevin Wolverton and thank him for his heroic acts on September 4th, 2024. Encourage all residents to join us in this worthy observance."
All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're honored. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kurtz, and thank you, Kevin and Mitchell, for bringing that to our attention. This time, I'll call on Commissioner Jerry McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, friends in the audience. I think what we just seen is just absolutely wonderful things. Commissioner Smith had a memory of a lady that served our community. It's all about the community. And Kevin, who just saved a life, it's just absolutely wonderful. And our community is what I'm going to talk about, that started 225 years ago, and this commission gratefully supported it. And I want to say a few things before I read the resolution. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Luttrell and the people, Commissioner Kurt, the people at the Wilson County School System and the Lebanon Special School System, because as it stands right now, we're going to have 2,000 fourth graders, 1,000 on Thursday, 1,000 on Friday. They have 16 stations in Fiddler's Grove, they will stop and get a snippet of information, history information on our county, such as when the first air mail service started, the first plane landed in Wilson County, just little snippets like that. And want to thank the Watertown School, they have a, I guess you'd call it the drama club, they're going to have students dressed as Sam Houston, who had an office on the square, who was the governor of two states, to walk up to the kids and tell a little bit about himself, a little bit about their history. So it's going to be really, I think, really, really good. The paintings of the courthouse, and we're going to dedicate the Ward Ag Center out there, again, with the monument in front. It'll be at 2 o'clock, and Congressman Rose is going to speak there, and the mayor will be speaking at the opening at 10:15. So I have the proof copy today of the program. It'll go to print in the morning, and it'll be available to everybody as they come in on Saturday for the general birthday of our, anniversary of our county. With that, I want to read the resolution that we've all signed, and I will start. Resolution, Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring the 225th anniversary of our county. Whereas Wilson County was founded October the 26th, 1799, by an act of the Third General Assembly of the State of Tennessee. And if you don't know, the Third General Assembly, at that time, met in Knoxville, Tennessee. Whereas this act entitled, "An Act Reducing the Limits of Sumner County, Creating Two Counties, Estating That the New Counties Will Be Called Wilson and Smith." Whereas Wilson County was named in honor of Major David Wilson, who served with distinction in the Revolutionary War. He was a member of the Territorial Assembly and Speaker of the House of Representatives in 1794. And whereas, the native inhabitants of the Cherokee and Chickasaw and other tribes who hunted the forests, such as the Cedars of Lebanon, the early settlers who transformed the landscape into what we now have farms and towns. Whereas through the years, many men, women, in Wilson County have answered the call to serve their country in the armed forces. Today, Wilson County is proud to be the home of over 10,000 veterans, not to mention the many other active-duty service members that we presently have. Whereas Wilson County is the home to three cities: Lebanon, Watertown, Mount Juliet, and dozens of other unincorporated communities. And when Ms. Lander down at the archives researched all that, there was like 174, is that right, communities across our county that have grown and passed away, I guess you'd say, a number of. Whereas Lebanon is the county seat, formed on November the 13th of 1801, the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee enacted to form the county seat, and 40 acres were set aside. One acre was set aside on the Pub Square, Pub Square, and 39 acres were to be sold as town lots. And two of those lots, just in a little history, two of those lots, six and eight, were owned by a guy named Andrew Jackson, who traded land rents. Whereas the city of Lebanon was officially chartered years later in 1819, there had been a total of five Wilson County courthouses built over the years. The first was built in 1848, whereas agriculture has been the major backbone of our county since 1799. Wilson County has been a leader in agricultural commodities such as wheat, corn, as well as other production of sorghum butter and many, many other things. Today, Wilson County leads the state with most century farms, and we also have two pioneer farms. Whereas, we commemorate our story of history for the past 225 years, and the people of Wilson County are filled with aspiration, hope, and faith that our best days are still ahead of us. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize October the 26th, 2024, as the 225th anniversary of Wilson County, and encourage all citizens to join with us in this worthy observance. Move to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
(Inaudible) leave anything out. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Commissioner McFarland, Commissioner Vanata, for all your work to make this happen. I know you had many people that helped you, but this has been a long process, and looking forward to a good day on Saturday. No public hearing tonight, to my knowledge. Report for the Minutes Committee, Commissioner Fields.
(Inaudible) Remember, there's a copy of the Minutes Committee meeting in your packet. Before I make a motion to accept those, there is a correction to be made. It says the meeting was called to order at 6:30 p.m. and adjourned at 5:40 p.m. That's impossible. The meeting was commenced at 5:38, and we need to, I need to make a motion to amend the minutes tonight.
You're a second. All in favor, say aye.
Now, everybody has a copy of the minutes, and I've moved that they be accepted and received and filed.
All in favor, say aye. Reading of the minutes?
(Inaudible) Read the minutes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Ms. Sarah Davenport is here to talk to you tonight, and I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mayor Hutto. Good evening, commissioners. On your desk, you will find a flyer for the Governor's Volunteer Star Awards. If you don't have one of those, please let me know, and I will get that to you. This is an annual project that originated in the Tennessee Governor's Office, where Tennessee counties are called on to select one outstanding volunteer in both an adult and a youth category. Wilson County has a longstanding tradition of recognizing its volunteers through this program, but this year, we wanted to mix it up a little bit. So I'd like to challenge each of you tonight to nominate at least one. You can do more, but nominate at least one volunteer in each of your districts whom you think should be recognized for what they do. And there is no question that Wilson County possesses the true volunteer spirit. Just look around at everything that's going on, some of the resolutions that we heard tonight, all the work that's been done over the past few weeks for relief efforts for Hurricane Helene. So we know we have those volunteers here, and we want to recognize them. So this is a great opportunity to not only recognize those volunteers, but also shed a light on the work that they do in their communities, and that helps to open doors to other folks, to let them get involved. So we really want to get you involved in this as well. There is no act of volunteerism that is too big or too small. We want to hear about everything. Really, the only requirement is that they do reside in Wilson County and that they're not compensated for whatever work it is that they're doing. It's very simple to nominate someone. You can go onto our website, and I know a lot of you have got that pulled up on your screens right now. If you go under the Wilson County Spotlight, you'll see the Governor's Volunteer Star Award logo. Click on that, it'll take you to the application. Or feel free to send me an email or give me a call in the office, and I will be happy to... to walk you through that process. Applications are open now until Friday, November the 8th at noon. So you've still got some time to make those nominations, and really want to encourage you to do that. We will, as a county, recognize everyone who has been nominated, but then our committee is tasked with trying to narrow it down to two. We have to pick an adult and then a youth to send them on to the state, where they don't compete at the state level, but they are recognized, and they do represent Wilson County. So we really want to get you guys involved in that and help us out with it. So if you could, please think of someone in your district. I know you've got them, bound to have them. So we'd love to see that happen. Unless anyone's got questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Appreciate you. Pastor Denton?
Yes, on behalf of some of the members tonight, I'd like, on most-
I think on everyone's desk, they have a flyer. The kickoff endowed lecture series, the Hefner Martin series, will start with Charlie Blackwell Thompson here on Thursday night, October 24th, 4:30. Doors open, event starts at 5:00. She is the launch director for NASA's Exploration Ground Systems Program. She was the one who worked on the first launch of Artemis and is preparing on Artemis II with a manned crew this time. So Cumberland is very excited. President Stubbs, Courtney, the group there, wants to invite every one of the commissioners to come and be a part of this lecture series.
Thank you so much for that announcement. This time, I'll ask Mr. Drew Michael Haney to come forward, please. He's with the Legardo Utility District to give you an ARP update. Yes, sir, thank you. Did I say the last name right?
Yes, sir, you did.
Awesome, okay. I wasn't for sure.
Good evening, Chairman, or Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. I am with Legardo Utility District and Heathcotten Davis. Joey is sorry he couldn't be here. He had other things he had going on, but hopefully I won't take up too much of your time. So y'all decided a couple of years ago to award Legardo with $2.7 million. And in addition to that, TDEC and Wilson County gave a supplemental $1 million for a water line improvement project, where we have designed and started construction, almost completed construction of over 30,000 linear feet of water line to improve water pressure distribution for over 5,000, or I'm sorry, 4,000 residents in and around the Legardo service area. The total project costs, as you can see, 1.13 million for the pipe purchasing, valves and fittings was .466 million, construction was 6.78 million, bringing us to a total construction cost of $8.376 million. And right now, our project completion is 78%. Looking at it from a design point of view, sorry. This is the water line on Cole's Ferry. It's approximately 12,672 linear feet of 12-inch. Horn Springs, we have two water line sections equalling 4,789 linear feet of 10-inch water line. And Cairo Bend Road is 16,010 linear feet of 8-inch pipe. Pending your questions, that's all I have.
Any questions, Mr. Drew, Mr. John?
Yeah, I had to determine when to do 8, 10, or 9. I need to determine that.
Yes, sir. So that takes some engineering. We look at the demand, the residents, also project development areas, and based off that, that's how we decide on what size water line it needs to be.
And the larger being more, for that getting more water.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes, sir. Can you give us an idea from the time that the money was approved and granted to the Legardo District, how long it took for you guys to do your engineering and get your easements and all that before you started your construction project?
So let me think about that, because I took this over from another engineer. I would, we awarded the project on the middle of July in 2023. ARPA, so I would roughly say two years.
That's before the first shovel goes in the ground?
Correct.
But between the, when you got the award, I'm assuming, are you saying you started after the award was granted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you may or may not have this answer, but that's fine. I'll ask it anyways, and maybe we can connect and email and back and forth on it. How long before the initial engineering work started? And I guess the getting feet on the ground to start the process after that? I don't know if you can answer that tonight or not, but I'd love to have an answer.
So are you asking how long it took us to start the engineering design or start the construction?
Engine, just to even start the process before you even do construction.
So that is an in-depth question, and it may take me some time, but at the end of the day, reviewing contours, looking at alignments that we could use, looking at existing easements, determining which line sizes we need to use, and evaluating the hydraulic demands. You're looking at, before we got pen to paper on design, we're still doing calculations on the backend, but I probably venture to say three months. There's a lot of legwork that needs to happen before we actually get pen and paper to lay out a detailed design as such. And, I mean, also on this project, y'all may or may not know, but there's a lot of development going in Legardo's district. And so I have this one up that will show you, can you see my mouse? Yep. All right, so this bottom right-hand corner, there is the Preserve at Bell Point, huge development. And with that, they've split this out into multiple phases. And we had to also account for another engineer's design realigning the road, and so that took us some additional time to get that information from them. So it was difficult on Cairo Bend, because we had to incorporate that and understand long-term what the Preserve at Bell Point needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Dow?
I think what he's trying to ask is, well, how long was it before you started?
About a year. No, sir. I would, what, ARPA took an effect in 2020, right? I think.
Were granted in 22, August of 22, as much as.
So it would take-
One year, right?
Yeah, one year, sorry.
Yeah, one year.
Yep.
All right, man, you said you were 78% done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Drew, oh, sorry, Mr. Bobby.
Did you use any of the domain just created?
I don't think we did.
Wow.
Everything was purchased by Legardo. We did have some issues obtaining some easements. I also had to go through some revisions of easements, because property lines got shifted. We didn't understand, there were some changes, and there's been three easement revisions that were needed on this project. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Mr. John?
Just a comment, it looks like you guys have moved expeditiously, and I guarantee the people out there appreciate it.
Yes, sir. It's been, I mean, we have a good contractor, Hawkins and Price, they've been on the ball, keeping us up to date on everything. I got to applaud Legardo Utility District, they're doing their own construction administration, for the most part, construction inspection. So we, as engineers, are taken out of that, and they are, with the little team they have, they're taking care of, making sure all the pipe is inspected, all the testing is being completed to standard. Joey and his bunch have been knocking this out of a park. So I'm just behind the scenes on this, for the most part. Joey has been running with this and making sure it gets done in a timely manner.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Drew, appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any more notary list to be added, Mr. Drew? Notaries are handed out, they hear a motion to approve those. Got a motion to second discussion now? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Judicial Commissioners, I'll turn it over to Mr. John Gentry.
Yes, sir. Discard. Okay, we have two judicial commissioners that have been recommended by the committee. The first is Ms. Jenny White. She's been a part-time commissioner, and I'm not sure they're here tonight, but, oh, she is here. Can you stand up? Okay, this is Ms. Jenny White. And she's been approved or recommended by the committee for a two-year full-time tour or an appointment. I make a recommendation, I make a motion that we approve that.
Got a motion to second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The second one is Mr. David Williams, and he's back there as well. He has worked here before as a part-time commissioner, and he went away, and he's coming back as a full-time. He's also been recommended by the committee, and I make a motion, we approve him for a two-year term as well.
I got a motion to second discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you both, for being a part, yes. Thank you, Mr. John. Anything else, Mr. John?
That should, thank you very much, I appreciate them both being here, and thank you, Stacy.
Report for the Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Bernard?
We may meet October 1st at 5:30 in the conference room. Also, we met tonight at 6:40 in the conference room, but I've got these minutes here, I'll make a motion, we approve them.
I got a motion and a second, I hear any discussion? Seeing all in favor, say aye. Thank you. Report for the Director's Report, Mr. Troy Cooper. Move that stuff out of your way if you need to.
You don't need to, Commissioner. Our calls, we've been pretty busy the last couple of months. Right now, year-to-date total, 13,421. Pleased to say we have no vacancies. We are completely full, so. Been a long time getting there, but it's amazing to feel like you feel when you get there. So it's been a long time, so I feel good. And thank y'all, too, for making that partly happen, too. So if it wasn't for us working together, we would have never got to this point. So thank you. Ambulance wreck, right now, the ambulance status, it's still, the insurance company and the manufacturer are still going back and forth on what they're going to do with the unit. Personnel is all okay. So that's kind of where we're in lingo there with that. Our aerial was used in District 5, and it did help in saving of residents. We were able to get the extension needed to accommodate the backside of the house. So what it was bought for, it's being used for, and it's already made a big difference in the county. So thank y'all for that, too. I do want to make known that deployments that we sent to East Tennessee, we had two that went over in the incident management team, and then we had two to go over in the mental rehab team. It's amazing the comments that come back on how well that incident was managed over there. And a lot of that was due to our personnel that were there. And that also makes you feel good when you get multiple comments from higher-ups, that if that ever happened again, this is who I want back. So it just tells you the dedication and the skill that your employees have that work for us, for you. Because none of that is taken lightly, you know? I've never hired, basically off the street, and we have a program that works to get that skill level into this county. And that's what I'll always maintain with. And it's proven its fact over and over. So just to let y'all know that there's amazing things going out there, and you're being seen, and your name is out there with good people. So that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz?
No report.
Sheriff's Report, Sheriff Robert Ryan.
County Commission, your report's in your packet. Pretty much the numbers, 4,558 calls last month. The jail capacity is, we're at highest 529, but we're doing good right now. And I want to reiterate on what Director Cooper said, as of next week, we are pretty close to being fully staffed also, in the jail. So it's working, and we'll get them in, get them trained, get them going, and everything's going well. Tonight, I really want to go away from all the information that are in your report. I want to introduce you to two new members of the sheriff's office. Can Director Luttrell and Commissioner Kurtz come up here, please? Come on. These are not biting dogs, so at ease.
This is Mr. Kurtz's son right here, and he's in Lebanon Special School District. And you want to tell me which one's Zena and which one's Xander?
This is Xander. This is Zena.
There are two as members of, to the sheriff's office, and another two, you hear all across the country, we got to protect our schools. We're protecting our schools with anything we can put in these schools. These dogs are gun detection, they're not bite dogs, they're not drug dogs, they're just friendly dogs, and they detect the smell of a gun or ammunition. And they're in, we already had them in Lebanon Special School District, now we got them in the county schools, and they're making their rounds every day. And another thing they're doing is, I'm going to tell you what else they are, and I'm going to let Director Luttrell come up here in just a minute. They're a calming force, okay, with these kids. They can have a kid having a breakdown or something like that, let them see this dog, and it just sort of calms everything down. So Director Luttrell, you come up here and talk about what you've seen.
Thanks, Sheriff, thanks, Commissioner. You know, this partnership takes all of us. You've got a hand in it, we've got a hand in it, school system, sheriff's department. I want to thank these handlers, you know, this is a commitment, it's like they're babies. But what we're seeing, number one, just their presence. People know that we're on the lookout, we're going to do everything within our power to protect our schools. And this is just one layer, there's other layers, but one thing that, when you get to look at, when this first came to me, and I'm a dog person, I thought, man, I don't know about that. But over time, as I began to watch and look at other school districts around the country, what they're using them for, getting some reports, one of the greatest things is that presence extends beyond looking for the weapon. And this may not even be in attention to the program, when I met with the company out of Alabama- of Alabama, it's one of the things we talked about. Since COVID, we're seeing behaviors in school that we've never encountered to, to the degree. I'm just, it's one of the stressing factors. And, and one of the things that we noticed, and me and Mr. Kurtz had talked about this, there's kids that look forward to seeing these dogs in their school. And there's even, they're getting to know our kids, our families, and, and even a promised visit, believe it or not, can change the behavior of a student. Now, that may seem unreal to a lot of people, but that's the result. So, I just want to thank everybody, this is on the cutting edge. Please know they're working at all times. You're going to see them in our schools, you're going to see them at events, ballgames, they're working. We, we want that message, we want them seeing that we're going to do everything within our power to protect our schools. And it's one of the most burdensome things we deal with, but these tools are helping and thank you. The great thing, I think, this partnership went through without any problems and in government, that's usually not the case. There's, there's an expense being shared and coming out of our budget and, and that's what's been pleasing to me, to see the commitment to doing whatever it takes. And again, that's just one measure, this don't solve all the problems, but don't be surprised if I look to bring in our budget, maybe even additions as we grow and try, try to get more presence in our schools with these dogs. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hall, you have a question?
I was just going to speak to the program as well. As a teacher, I've had Zena in my classroom and those kids absolutely loved it. They were thrilled to have her in there and just to meet her. I've seen Xander in the hallways and also I just want to kind of just give you an update. My daughter has met Xander and she loves Xander. She is always excited to see those dogs. It is a asset that is going to pay so many dividends for this county and I'm so happy that we've done it, so thank you.
Commissioner Rich?
Thank you, Director Luttrell and Sheriff Robert Ryan. Just want to say I've been able, fortunate enough to see these dogs firsthand and I know that we want to stay on the cutting edge here in Wilson County. And I would like to be the first to say that I would like to see this program extended and get to the point where we have one of these dog, the K-9 officers with every, within every one of our high schools. I think it would go very, very far for the security of our children and that's what we're here for. So, just wanted to pass that along, that I'd like to see that eventually stretch out to every high school.
Commissioner Dow?
Have they found any guns? I mean, it's a good thing, win-win, I know, but I just wanted to.
I hope we never have to, okay? Now, Blaze was involved in something when we first got her, it was, it was firecrackers that they did detect.
So, guns out of two, yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to get the word out, these dogs are in school and it's, I mean, you sit here and look at the SROs, what they've been doing all month long and you see all the threats of this and threats of that, and let me tell you something, this is a good program and it's working. And Commissioner Rich, I agree with the high school stuff and I'll do everything I can to help make that happen. But that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Sheriff Brian.
Wondering why this dog sat down over here a while ago, somebody's got something on him.
That was a Lebanon High School dog getting after old Costley over there, I think. Stole that, yeah.
I'll pay for it.
Oh, yes, sir, thank you. Thank you all. Yeah, ready to go.
Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe. Director Schools Report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell. I went crazy for a second, I'm thinking he's already been up here.
Thank you, Mayor. You do have a copy of my report, we'll go briefly, you do have the agendas of our regular session, school board members or meetings that were held on September the 23rd and October the 2nd. Student attendance is still good, we're at ninety-five point, a little over ninety-five percent. Mount Jude High School, Tucker's Crossroads, Glavel Middle, Mount Jude Middle, had the best attendance and chronic absentee rates for this attendance period and we still focus on that. That's the number one thing, is keeping our kids, getting them in school. We did close on Friday, September 27th due to potential forecasted unknown impact of Hurricane Helene. We were fortunate in this area, but as you know, we had areas in East Tennessee and other southern states that were not as fortunate. Ask you to please keep our neighbors and thoughts and prayers. We know what that's like in the community, we went through something similar, that's a long recovery process, it's an emotional process and, but we did choose one of our ten stockpile days for inclement weather and I'm the one that gets the infamous emails, either in support or against. I will always err on safety and when, when we run over twelve thousand miles on these roads and with the forecast, I think we got it right. Thankful, we didn't, there was nobody in danger, but it just, to me, it makes sense when you have those days built in. We still have nine left, maybe we won't have to use them, but if we do, I, I don't hesitate to use them, I think you've seen that and, and always will take that stance. On that, we have a teacher, Ms. McCamey, who works in our virtual program, who is from Carter County, Tennessee and Johnson County, Tennessee. She reached out to me as some of the things got to taking place. She had some connections in Carter County, I reached out to Johnson County's Director of Schools, I was in school there in second grade, first and second grade, so was familiar with Mountain City, some churches there. Reached out to just see, can we help? And we kind of threw it together over fall break, but last Thursday, we delivered, Maintenance Department, myself, Board Member, Mr. Bedee went with me. We drove into Elizabethan, Carter County, dropped off, we were fortunate enough, just this community, real quickly, we put together, I don't know, probably twelve, fourteen pallets of stuff they needed, cleaning utensils, things, things of that nature, food. Give you, when we got to Johnson, we dropped off in Carter County, this church, it's, it's doing outreach for disaster relief and, and got our stuff set off there. Then we drove forty-five miles into Johnson County. If you've ever been to Mountain City, it's a beautiful place, but it's isolated, you're just a few miles from Virginia border and North Carolina border. And talking to their school system, they ever went to the elementary school, that's where they've set up is getting, people can come in anytime and get, get necessities. To show you the impact, nineteen hundred student school district, twenty-five percent have either lost a home or a road. There's only one road into Johnson County that's open, this was last Thursday. Fifty, about a population of fifteen to seventeen thousand people and fifty percent of them still without power. So, I encourage you, I know there's, I know my church has done some donations, I know there's a lot of churches, communities, let's don't forget these people. They need help and they're going to need help. Monday night up there, they got four inches of snow, last Monday night, and, and you know, one of the things they said is, we've got homeless families now, we've never had homeless families. So, and, and we're talking months to rebuild in roads and bridges and county roads, I, I don't know, there's going to have to have some help, but they got initial help, an initial need and they're wonderful people. And so, just, we did want to reach out from a school system, we were able to get stuff, we kind of bypassed some of the stuff and we know it's going, some of the people, families were coming in as we were unloading, getting stuff that they needed, so still asking, and I know you will, but remember them. Also, I want to announce on December the 5th, six to eight o'clock, I think it's going to be at the ATC Building, I'll finalize that for you for next month's meeting. But I want to ask you to mark your calendar, you know, we've had a tough school year, it's great in a lot of ways, but these threats. We have partnered with Lebanon Special School District, Homeland Security, TBI, they have a training, an informational training that they do, I've seen it once before. We're calling it enough is enough. We're wanting to inform the public and the parents and any community member of what's going on on these phones. It's unbelievable. Our kids are talking to people all over the world, people they don't even know. So, so this, this awareness presentation deals with sex trafficking, school threats and online bullying. It started with sex trafficking and now, that's where we're finding a lot of these threats are coming from. And the fear that it engages and, and especially a parent, they get that call. You know, we had the one early in the year at Watertown where we had to lock down schools there. Our law enforcement was great, we felt like within ten, fifteen minutes that we knew Homeland Security, Jeremy's involved, that this is probably a hoax. That one was untraceable, no town where it was made from. We've had some others that we have been able to find out where they came from and there's been charges and all those things. But it, most of this stuff's going back to these phones and, and our children are on these phones, sometimes in elementary schools. We're wanting to just make an awareness. It is an event, I would encourage you to come, no children allowed, it's adult only. I've been through the training and the information, it's not a fear, we're not trying to make it, but we need to know who our kids, what they're doing. And it's our responsibility, so we're going to bring that, I would encourage if you can, it's a two-hour event and it'll be December the 5th and I'll get you more information. We're partnering with Lebanon Special School District, every private school, any homeschool parent, because all these, this generation is involved in this and, and sometimes innocently they get caught up in things and they don't know what to do and they don't know who to turn to and they're being extorted. And so, we believe that enough is enough and that this is a strong enough community that we can make a difference by, by making people aware of what's going on and how to educate them about the steps to take. So, if you can, I would like for, you are invited and we'd welcome you. December the 5th, be from six o'clock and I think it's going to be at ATC, but we're still working on that, but my understanding, I think we're going to do it in auditorium at ATC. And we would encourage you to come and see, it's, it'd be very informational. Want to announce that, again, we've received a award grant from Mr. Holland's Opus and the CMA Foundation, tune of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Be ninety-three instruments provided to our bands, many in our KH schools and that cannot, they just don't have the means to, tubas are expensive, I've learned in the last four years, some of this equipment and, and other things that we want our kids to be able to be exposed to. So, that, that grant has come through and we're grateful for that. We'd like to congratulate some of our board members for two thousand twenty-four TSBA Boardshipship Awards. Kimberly McGee was awarded Level One and Two, Dr. Beth Myers was awarded Level One and Two and Chair Jamie Pharoah was awarded Level Three Board Member. And they earned these levels by participating in training, participation, board activities, workshops and even volunteering beyond their local duties as a board member. So, they're continuing to learn more and, and become better board members and, and that's our goal and, and they've done a great job. Enrollment update, as of nine twenty-four, it's the last day I have numbers, PK through twelve, twenty thousand seven hundred and ninety-two students, that's up four hundred from the end of the last school year. Really will not be surprised if it's twenty-one thousand and, you know, just, that's quite a bit of growth. That's kind of where we've been paced in the last four or five years. Open enrollment is taking place from October 16th to November the 14th. The reason we've, we've moved that up is, is we are an open enrollment county and, and it'll make a little sense, if you look at your packet, you have a memo that was sent to board members and voted on, it was my recommendation. Legardo is, is really progressing nicely, I was in a meeting there last week, we've had great weather for building to building and, and a lot of it is, will be under roof soon and get it dried in, so we're shooting for having that thing open, that school to open next fall. Not guaranteeing it yet, but we're, they've really made a lot of progress in the last two months. But in that, to, we wanted to go ahead and do the rezoning, it's a new school and you see in that memo, I made a recommendation to rezone, a proposal, it was a rezoning proposal, zone six hundred and fifty-one students to Legardo Elementary, four hundred and fifty-four students at Elsie Patton, four hundred and seventy-three students at West Elementary and six hundred and forty students at Stoner Creek. It's a pretty big rezone. Also recommend it's time moving, rezoning two hundred and fourteen students from West Wilson to Mount Juliet Middle due to the fact we've opened that school and we're almost at capacity right now. So, we're trying to balance those numbers, including in that memo, what I want to point to, it would put our building capacities of Legardo Elementary, Elsie Patton, West, Stoner Creek, Mount Juliet, West Wilson, I give you those numbers. And, and as I have made clear, thank you for what you've done to our building programs, rezoning is difficult, it just is. I don't care how you cut it and, but from a management side, if you look at those numbers, it's hard for me to come and ask for bond money from this county when we have building capacity. This rezoning plan, a lot of effort went into it, working with our busing, it will help our busing and it gets our numbers in a capacity that allows for some growth without having to put portables in. And so, you see that, I'm proud to say that it did pass, our board passed it and we are starting that process. Part of that process is students that ending grade will be allowed to stay through the open zone process and that's why we wanted to go ahead and get this out there early and start our open zone process as we work on. I hope you can see, we're trying to manage these building capacities across this county to level them out and to provide as much, to use our buildings, we need to use our buildings and use the space. There'll be, the next step will be, I'm already getting questions with how do we move teachers, I've got meetings set up, we're working with that with HR and we'll do that as, as best as possible. I will go ahead and make a public statement, forced transfer of a teacher is the last option. There's other ways of doing it and, and there'll be a lot of interest in people wanting to go to Legardo Elementary. There'll be some people wanting to stay, we know that, so we'll be working through that in the upcoming weeks. That is my report, I will entertain any questions if you have.
Got a motion to second, Commissioner Bries?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Green Hill High School's volleyball team, won their first regional title this last week. They did actually go to sectionals and unfortunately lost to Noelensville, but they, they had a really great season, so congratulations Green Hill Volleyball.
Mr. Costley?
Director Luttrell, you went over a lot of things in there, appreciate all the information. Did you mention anything about a football game Friday night that happened up here? I was just, I know Commissioner Glover was curious, who, what the outcome of that was.
Mr. Costley, I understand your allegiance, I don't practice sectionalism, I represent all of Wilson County and we win every Friday night, so that's where I'm going to leave it at.
Any other questions, I'll get you out of there, all in favor, say aye. Commissioner Dees' report, thank you, Director. Commissioner Dees' report from Ms. Murphy is in your packet, I hear a motion to approve it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Trustees' report is also in there from Mr. Major, I hear a motion to approve. Got a motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Road Superintendent Report, Mr. Steve Murphy.
All rise.
Mayor Commissioners? To this day, we paved twenty-seven point three eight miles, still paving. Our mowers are still running, which ain't doing a whole lot of cutting, there's a lot of dust flying, but we're still running, trying to cut some areas back throughout the county. Slope mowers are running and still doing our general maintenance throughout the county. That concludes my report.
Chair Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, what's going on with these on the roads?
White and yellow.
Any other good questions? All in favor, say aye. Ag Center Report, Mr. Josh Major.
Tough one to follow, but before I get started on, as far as what we have coming up at the Ag Center, I just wanted to take a brief moment. This past week, we had, which Albert Valdez, who's in charge of the Health Department here in the county, they utilized the east-west building there for the, for the Health Department's baby shower and that, that event helped out over a hundred and eighty families. And that, that event helped out over 180 families, you know, here locally, you know, families in need. And I just wanted to, you know, point that out as far as the, I know I talk a lot as far as the, you know, what we have going on from an agricultural standpoint, but I wanted to, to mention that and what a success that was as well. And you know, just to show some of the versatility there of the, of the Ag Center. But, and of course, this week, as Mr. McFarland is, you know, well knows what we have going on there, I would like to say, if you're coming to that, I strongly encourage you to park on the midway. We're going to be kind of congested over there closer to Fiddler's Grove. So if you, if you are planning on attending there, we would, would ask you to park there. Then also next week, we have the, the County Health Fair coming up. So all the, all the county employees will, will be there for, for that. And we have the Dancing Lights of Christmas, they are back for their eighth year at, at the Ag Center. And that, that event will start up November 8th and run through January the 4th with the 5K. That will be on Thursday, November the 7th there. And as far as the, up in the livestock complex, we've finished up with the dog show season and we're fixing to move, move back into the rodeos. We have the Little Britches Rodeo, Middle Tennessee Junior Rodeo coming up in the, for it to finish out the month of October and then November and December are mostly, mostly rodeo events going on. And one other event I would like to mention, on November the 2nd, the Extra Mile will be back with us again. And it is the, the largest Down Syndrome Awareness Event in the state. You know where kids from all over the state come and they set up a stage and have music, but it's a, a very good event and one that, you know, people come from all over the state to, to attend that. We also have, I just wanted to point out how many, how many families in the county utilize our buildings as far as for their Thanksgiving meals, Christmas meals, all of those types of things. And we also, in the week of Thanksgiving, we have the Boys from the South Bull Sale and also the Jingle Bell Swine Show that will, that will be going on those, the weekend of Thanksgiving. But that's my report unless anybody has any questions.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Josh, this may be more geared towards the committee, your Ag Management Committee, but I noticed when the Health Department was going to utilize the grounds, they were charged to use the East-West Building. And being that they're a county organization, is there, I don't know, is there some way that we could not charge a fee to, if it's our own organization that's using it? Because that would, I know that was part of his budget that he presented.
We, we had that conversation with Albert and he, I think that it was simpler from his, you know, financial standpoint to do it that way would be my answer, Mike.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Glover?
Commissioner Breeze, you know when, I try to announce it every year, it's going to kind of file a little bit quicker. The Dancing Lights, is it the opening weekend when the veterans can go free?
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay, just so, you can put out to your districts.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Mr. Major. Expo Center Report, Ms. Gale.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Hutto, Commissioners. You should have a copy of our report in your packet. And so for the month of September, we came out to the black. About 40, almost $4,300. So not quite as much as we would have hoped, but the important part is we were in the black. So I was very excited to see that. Our Preferred Provider Program continues to be very strong. And we did over $100,000 in the Preferred Provider Program last year and I think it will easily hit that again this year. So we're very happy to have that. And on the second page, you will see our expense breakout. Zendal provides that for us each month. And he highlighted two things in green. He just wanted to show that they were significantly more than they are in the past. And so that feeds into the expenses. So when you break it down, I took some time to go through and break down the income versus the expenses. And while we're doing well on the income, it's the expenses that continue to escalate, that take away from that income. So that's why our numbers are not quite as high as they were. Our income is, it's our expenses that are draining that. So just wanted to point that out. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer those. The third page will kind of show you, it's my year over year over year summary. We're definitely still on point to kind of come out where I projected last time. If, if the months pan out in the next three months, we should come out pretty much par to last year, which given the fact that our expenses have gone up, I'm real happy with that. I can live with that as long as we're in the black, which we would be. And our traffic counts are continuing to count as well. And then you can see that year to date, we are at about 69, well, almost 70,000 for the Preferred Provider Program. So that's a very strong piece in our revenue cycles for what we bring in. I provided something for you on the next page that's a little different than I've done in the past. I just kind of wanted to see where we were in terms of revenue. I didn't, I didn't bring in the expenses, I just wanted to see the trending for the revenue. And it will show you from 2018 to 2023, we've just been on this track up. And that's what we want to be. We're seeing a lot more come in that utilize during the week. A prime example of that is the Comp Controller's Office that comes in for three days. They are happy campers and the Comp Controller himself said, as long as you have a building big enough for us, we'll be back. So that's, that's the kind of thing that we like to hear. We like to hear those compliments come in about our staff. They enjoy being there, they like what we do, they like what we offer, and they feel that the pricing is fair. And your next page is a list of events that are coming up. And as I tell you every time I have to do a report, that list is only as good as the moment it was printed, because it has changed and it always does. But it's a pretty good representation of what we've got. What I am seeing in December is I'm seeing more events in the month of September than we've had in, starting in 2020 when I started. So people are utilizing it for holiday parties, people are utilizing it for maybe just a holiday-related meeting. That's exciting to see. And one of our biggest event promoters is actually in December and they're looking for a spring date, which I kind of chuckled at saying, yeah, when one opens, I will let you know. So we'll see how that works out. Then you have a page that looks a lot like this. And for the third year, we've been nominated as a Reader's Choice Award. So that's exciting because that's feedback that's coming through this organization about our facility, which means people outside Wilson County know about us. So my three-prong approach in marketing is local, national, and statewide. So it's working and that's very exciting to see and it's a great honor to have. So that's kudos to all the work that has been done throughout the year. And that is all I have for you tonight. Does anybody have any questions for me? Yes, sir.
Got a motion to hear a second. Commissioner Denton?
And our expenses are going up. Of course, is there any way that we can adjust our income, able to take care of some of those expenses, our, our pass some of those expenses along to the people who are utilizing our, our building and our facilities there? Is there not a way we can kind of offset those expenses through the people who are using the building?
That's a good question. That's one that Zendal and I have talked about extensively and one that I was just talking to Tommy tonight about that we need to bring up at the next Ag Committee meeting. We are due for a rate increase, particularly with the main exhibit hall, because the cost per square foot for the main exhibit hall versus south hall is not on par and it should be. Although south hall has a little bit more amenity-wise than the main exhibit hall does, but there's still room for doing that. If I told somebody that they could rent the entire building for $5,500 a day, I usually get the, wait, what? Type comment because they're shocked. They're absolutely shocked. So I do think we had, that's one area. We are definitely working, Zendal has been getting us quotes on our IT and sound system. If we, it's going to cost some money. And if we put that in, then we've got some bandwidth there to maybe charge for some things that we haven't typically charged because we're going to be able to offer more. Right now, the system is not a great system and it seriously needs to be replaced. And we're at the point where, and we've had to refund, well, not refund, but we've had to cut the charge for IT and sound systems that we've used because they don't work. So we've had to make amendments for that, on contracts for that. So yes, there are some things. I know when I first came on board, we were not charging for setup days. And we, Zendal and I reviewed that and said, you know what, if you're going to be in the building, you're going to pay for a setup day and that made a huge difference in our income. So we can go back and look at that kind of stuff too. That's, we're looking to see what we can do without overpricing ourself out of the market.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hall?
Ms. Gale, do you have a number in your mind, just based off of what's coming up in the Expo Center, your expected revenues for the remainder of the year?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure if you look at the year prior, you could almost translate those numbers across, over to this year. Probably pretty close. Obviously, I can't guarantee that. But like one of our biggest ones is the first weekend in December is Mistletoe Merchants. It's easily a $20,000 to $25,000 show. So that, that, that was a big add to the December show for us. But that's where I'm hoping that we land, because that means we're at least on par. We may not have climbed, but we're at least on par.
A lot of repeat customers from year to year?
We do, we have a lot. And there's, we have a lot of repeat customers. And there's a double-edged sword there because they want to make sure that they have their dates from year to year. We don't contract any more than three years out. So if I was to tomorrow, say we have a rate increase, I'm not really going to see the effect of that rate increase for probably two years, probably realistically, because those contracts are already in place. But that's why we only do three years, because that way I have the ability to increase the rent going forward. But then I have a couple people that they are experiencing the last rate increase for the first time with their contracts for next year. And they were like, well, you raised the rent. I'm like, well, yes, because expenses have gone up and I'm sure you have experienced that also. Oh, well, yeah. And it made sense to them. I mean, it just took them off guard. But they understood it after I explained it.
Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Gentry?
I noticed in the electricity is going up quite a bit too, correct?
Mm-hmm. That's probably the biggest culprit.
Is there a way we can monetize that and recover some of that based on maybe a surcharge for electricity used? Or can you determine what is used?
We can break it down. So Middle Tennessee Electric can break it down for us on a day-to-day basis if we want to do that. But like we have, for example, I have recruited a printing event that's coming in. This is professional printing, so this is big machines. We identified that is going to pull more electrical current than say a sewing expo is going to pull, right? So we discussed having a surcharge there. And that's kind of what brought that up between Zendal and I, looking at, we don't want to get to the point that we're counting how many things you plugged in, but if it's something that's large in nature that's going to pull, then we do need to look at applying a surcharge at that.
Okay, in future contracts, can you include that?
Yes, yes. I have the ability, I have a whole section on page two that I can customize that to be whatever it needs to be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Rich?
Yeah, I'm a little worried with one thing that you said. We were talking about every year rate increases and we said that we're probably two years out before we can make any changes. I'm worried that in two years, we're looking at more of a red than we are black if we're holding off for two years before we make a rate increase.
Okay, either I wasn't clear, maybe I wasn't clear, is that, no, I'm not saying we wait two years. I'm saying if we make a change now, we're only going to see those changes on the contracts I write from the day we make the change going forward. So depending on when those events take place, that's when we would realize the additional revenue from that.
Right.
But we don't have to wait two years to do that.
But if they're already in a contract for two years, they're set in at a rate.
That is correct.
And we've been pretty full as far as the calendar for the next few years. So in reality, we're looking at probably two years before we are able to actually see an increase in our profit, which puts us closer to being in the red two years from now.
It could be, it could be. I just, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I need to take it in front of the Ag Committee to see, okay, I think, I think we're ready. I just need their blessing to do that.
Okay.
But that's a fair point.
Commissioner Glover?
Not so much a question, just a statement about the veterans for being able to go into the lights. It's November the 8th to the 11th. And then for the rest of the season, it's $5 off, but it can be combined with any other coupon. So the 8th to the 11th, if you let the people in your district know, you get in, get in for free if you're a veteran or a current military member.
We'll try to put that out tomorrow on the email for everybody as well. Thank you. And Commissioner Hall?
No, you're fine.
This is just a suggestion for, or an idea for the committee to possibly start implementing, instead of doing a, a rate increase, when we feel like we need a rate increase, start to look at doing graduated rate increases that, you know, it sets a schedule for the future years. So that these, when we sign a new contract, we say, all right, your rate this year is this. And then next year after that, if you come back with this, it's going to be this and so on. Maybe that's an idea we could look at.
Well, the only way that I see that that, that's, that's a fair point. And the only way that I see that that may work is if we quit writing them up to three years out. If we only do it year over year, yes, you would, I could do that. I would have a hard time doing that if I'm writing a three-year contract and say, oh, by the way, everything's valid except the price.
What I'm saying is have this, have there already be a schedule and just say, these are the rates for 2025 and 2026, these are going to be the rates in 27, these are going to be the rates. And just say, these are your guaranteed rates for those years.
I'm happy to take.
That'd have to be something the committee'd have to come up with.
No, I'm happy to take it to the committee. Thank you for the idea, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Ms. Gale. Report from Public Buildings Committee, Commissioner Weathers. Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs. Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze. Audit, Commissioner Glover. Broadband Access, Commissioner Franklin. Developing Tourism, Commissioner Brown.
The committee met on Thursday, October 10th. Those minutes are in your packet. We also met this evening. Those will be in next month's packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Got a motion and second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Ethics, Commissioner Dow. Finance, Commissioner Costley.
Finance Committee met Thursday, September 5th, upstairs conference room. Minutes are in your packet. There is a typo in the minutes, so it says in the absence of Chairman Costley, Vice Chairman Blake Hall, which the vice chairman at the time was Commissioner Bowman. That's the only thing I see. Other than that, minutes are in your packet. We also met again tonight, that'll be in next month's packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Motion and second, to be received and filed as amended. All in favor, say aye. Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met Thursday, October the 10th, 2024 here in the courthouse conference room. Your minutes are in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Got a motion and second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Insurance, Commissioner McFarland.
Insurance, September 4th, 5:30, conference room, move it be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
Judicial Commission met October 10th.
The minutes are in the packet. Make a motion and they be received and filed.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Legislative Ad-Hoc, Commissioner Costley. Planning on zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
Zoning, met October 10th, 5:30, conference room, move it be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Rules, Commissioner Keith.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban Type Facility Board, November 10th. Third minute in the past, minutes be received and filed. Minutes in the past, minutes be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Finance Director's Report, Mr. Aaron Madigan.
Not much to say, actually, about the, the finance report. You do have on your desk the Service Efforts and Accomplishments Report that we've been promising you forever. Please give me some feedback and let me know what you like and don't like about it. The objective is to try to measure, or to give some indication based on the resources that you're putting into a department, what sort of results you're getting out. That is the, that's the idea behind the Service Efforts and Accomplishments Report. There's a lot of people that I have to thank, and I'm going to flip over because I'm going to forget somebody. Joe Good, who helped me develop this from the get-go, Lauren Brees worked on this one a lot, Lance Howell, and Brian Newberry. Without those two guys, this is not possible at all. We did discover some things between the last time we did this and this time. We tried to just pull information from the audits, thinking that it would be comparable. We have a uniform chart of accounts after all, right? But when you look at the jail, for example, a lot of people charge their utilities to the jail. We don't charge our utilities to the jail. We charge the jail utilities to county buildings and some of the maintenance. So to try to dig out, we had to approach things, we found, from a little bit different tact this time. But if this is something you like and would like to see expanded, I'm interested. I've always wanted to find a way to communicate what we do with the dollars that we get. If that's something that you're interested in, let me know. If not, let me know that as well, because there's a lot of time, effort, and energy that goes into putting these things together, and it's not worth it if it's not useful. So that's really all I have to say about that. We will have another budget workshop. I have not set a date for that yet. It will be sometime after the next steering committee meeting where the pay plan is going to be presented again. This one, the intent is, if you did not come, by the way, you, I have binders like this for you, that has everything from amortization schedules to the revenues in the general fund, the expenditures in the general fund by department, the slides that were presented. The idea next time is to actually figure out what accounts you want to dig into. Do you want to know what's in 399 in WEMA? I know Jerry does. We'll be ready for that one before we start. Do you want to know what 399 is in each and every one? Because I want you to know what you feel is quote-unquote waste. Now, again, we can't take any votes. It's a workshop, right? But we will write a list of things that you say are questionable. And that's the best I can do in advance of what I think is going to be a interesting year, in terms of how we're going to fund some things. So that's why we're doing this. So if you're interested in taking a dive and, you know, seeing what you think might need to change, I'm inviting you to come when we set the next date. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe?
Budget Committee met October 10th. Minutes in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolutions?
Okay, Resolution 24-10-4 to amend the Contract of Insurance for Partially Self-Funded Medical and Dental Coverage for Wilson County Employees, Dependents, and Retirees.
Motion. We defer that to that one. This one we--
No.
Not, not--
Just a little like--
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I got a motion and a discussion. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-5 to approve a Contract of Insurance for Partially Funded, Self-Funded Medical and Dental Coverage on behalf of Wilson County Employees.
Motion.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-6 to approve the Administrative Services Contract with Cigna on behalf of the Wilson County Employees.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-7 approving the Cooperative Purchasing Agreement with Byboard.
Motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-8, approve WEMA Policy Number 501.33 EMS Billing and Financial Hardship Waivers. This was subject to approval of emergency management, I assume it was.
Oh, this is the one I think we deferred, isn't it? Isn't that right? Correct.
Remove this from the amendment, request Director Cooper.
Make a motion to, to remove? I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good.
Resolution 24-10-9 to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution for Line Item Transfers to WEMA.
Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-10, Resolution Correcting Budget Lines to Reflect WEMA Employee Rosters.
Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-11 to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from Ambulance Fund 118 to WEMA.
Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-12 to approve ARP Funds and the Cooperative Marketing Matching Grant Contract, and to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an additional appropriation into tourism.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-13 to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from the Highway Public Works Fund 131 to Road Commission.
Motion.
Discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24, yes, when I'm saying zero.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-14 to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from General Fund to Juvenile Services.
Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Clark? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-15 to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget, and to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation to Health Department.
Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-16 to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from the General Fund to Finance.
Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Smith? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-17 to approve the Attached Help America Vote Act Government Grant Contract, and to make an additional appropriation into Election Commission.
Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
To amend the, ah, excuse me. Resolution 24-10-18 to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from General Fund into Capital Projects.
I hear a motion?
Motion.
I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-10-19 to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from General Fund to Road Commission.
You got a motion? I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24, yes, when I'm saying zero.
Resolution passes. Hear a motion to suspend the rules?
No.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution 24-10-20 to amend the Budget and Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from the General Fund to Health and Welfare.
I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I did get a motion and a second, okay? Now, questions? Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This came up for the Health and Welfare Committee on October the 10th. We discussed it, and it was brought to our attention by Commissioner Gentry that there's a policy that we only approve these at the budget time, which is passed. So therefore, the Health and Welfare Committee voted to deny this request. I also appeal to my fellow commissioners tonight to deny that based upon the policy of the finance.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that we've kind of, it's been a topic here lately that we've talked about it. We brought it up in committee, like what Commissioner Fields spoke about, that we did vote to deny it. I spoke with Commissioner Hall, this is his district, and it kind of, to go through what we've, we've, from what I see, is that our finance department, every year, they send out an email that's very detailed of when, what, how, to pretty much apply for this grant. Anytime that we apply for a grant, or if you apply for a grant, you have to make sure that you follow all rules and directions, correct? Unfortunately, yes, we did agree, and we voted to award this, the $4,000 to the Greenville, but unfortunately, from what I've been advised, that the community center failed to provide the information, or the receipts, or whatever documentation that was needed in a timely manner, which, from speaking with our finance director, you know, at some point, our finance department has to close the books. We can't hold money. We, we're not going to chase people down to obtain that, the funds, for have them to come and obtain their funds. And again, there was not only one entity that did not collect, but there were seven more, so that's a total of eight. There's a conversation of where we'd pull the money from. If we allow one entity to do it, we'd have to do it for all. And then we'd have to pull that money from the fund balance of the county versus the funds of where it comes from, and that is hotel motel tax, because money this year has already been allocated and voted on. So with that being said, I just want to, you know, remind everybody in the room that if we do do this, expect other organizations to come back and try to get their money as well.
Commissioner Hall?
I don't necessarily disagree with what Commissioner Smith is saying about, you know, if we do it for this one, then we can expect other organizations to come forward, and that's understandable. I've just got to say that we're, we're squabbling over $4,000 for the Greenville Community Center. It's a small community center, and it's a volunteer effort from the people that run it. They're not doing it to make money, they're just doing it to keep it open so that we can make a benefit to the people in that community. I'm a part of that community. I live on that road. And so, you know, I see no reason to renig on our agreement to, 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 to do this grant of $4,000. And I understand that there, that the deadline was established by, my understanding is that that deadline was established by the finance department. I've yet to be shown anywhere where a committee, or this commission, said that the deadline is on June the 30th. And so, that's why, that's my general, you know, contention here, is that, number one, we're arguing over $4,000. We're fixing to go to a $30,000 birthday party on Saturday, and, you know, this, this is less than a tenth of a penny that we're talking about, as far as the tax rate's concerned. And so, you know, I, I would love to find a way to make this work, and I understand, you know, we, I got to convince the rest of y'all that, you know, it, that we need to do this for this community center, and I'm fine. I, I don't imagine that it's an extremely, the money, and another, another point here is that that money is there from last year. It, it's not like we're taking new money out of the fund balance. It, it was placed there because it was set aside for the Greenville Community Center. And so, the $4,000 is, is, I mean, in my opinion, it's theirs. And, and we prom, and we made a commitment to them for that money. And so anyways, I'm not, I'm not opposed to finding a way to say, okay, if you want to come get your money, or turn in your receipts, even though you've, you know, you've, and I'm fine with saying you can do that. And I'll just say that. But another point on it, and I'm, I'm not trying to say anything about the finance department, there's wonderful people in that department, and there's nothing, I, I don't want anybody to take this as me saying the finance department has done anything wrong at, okay, because I'm, I'm so thankful for that department. But the, the, the receipts were sent in in August, and there was no response at all to the Greenville Community Center from the finance department.[1791.53] And there was no response at all to the Greenville Community Center from the finance department. The response didn't happen until I stepped in and said, hey, what can we, what else is needing to be done? Because I was unaware that there was a deadline, okay? And so, I stepped in at the very beginning of October to try to figure out what needed to be done and if they needed to send other information or whatever. And then that's when I was told, well, the deadline passed. They turned it in in August, I think it was August the 7th or something like that. So, you know, the communication kind of fell apart. I don't know, you know, why it did, and I know that that department's super busy. And so, I understand why it fell apart. And again, I don't think they did anything necessarily wrong. I just, I feel like that we could have figured this out before today if we had known about it beforehand. And so, his, the gentleman that reached out to me, you know, he was frustrated that he hadn't heard anything, and that's why he reached out. So, I would love to figure out a way we can do this and to make it happen. We're talking, as far as the other seven organizations, we're probably talking, I don't know, I'm estimate, well, we gave out how much, $300,000 total, and there's only seven that didn't claim, or eight that didn't claim, and this one's only $4,000. So I would be willing to bet it's less than $50,000 that we still owe to people that didn't turn in, if they even come to claim it. And so, anyways, I've rambled for long enough, I appreciate you listening to me.
Mr. McFarland?
Mr. Chairman. Little Commissioner, I think that we've talked about in the resolution tonight, a hundred people out of our communities, and it's all about the communities. I think that the policies are about the same thing as guidance. And sometimes you got to forgive guidance, I think that's what they talk about in the Bible. So, a little grace on this committee's, on this commission's part, and a little forgiveness for this community would help the community in our county, and I think we ought to approve it.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to go back and comment on Commissioner Smith's statements. Once we set a precedent, we've opened up a Pandora's Box, and it just opens, I mean, why even have a deadline then? So, I go back to say, hey, the deadline was there, the guidelines were there, the rules, I mean, this was not the first year that this community center had applied for a grant. So they knew there was a deadline. So I just say, I'm voting against it.
Commissioner Brees?
I just wanted to answer a few questions that Commissioner Hall brought up about June 30th being a set date. So that date is actually set by the state of Tennessee, because that is the fiscal year for all counties and state governments, it's July 1 to June 30th. So once you hit June 30th, you have to close the books. It's required by state law. So after that, any unspent money at the end of June 30th is actually part of what we call turnback money. I know we talked about that in the workshop last week. So my guess is that since finance didn't actually receive documentation until August, is they were probably waiting for guidance after closing books. Because the only way funds can be allocated after closing books is to allocate the funds in the current budget year, which is FY '25. So the FY '24 allocation automatically closed at the end of, the end of the fiscal year. So that's why this budget amendment is here. So you can't just, you legally cannot just give them the $4,000 that were allocated in FY '24 in the FY '25 budget without going through this body. Does that?
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, last one, or last time I'll say something about this. Number one, I think that whoever's on the committee of the health and welfare committee, I think honestly, Mayor, do you not like us? To have to go through what we have to go through, to sit through and to really work through this, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But, you know, every year that we, every year, our committee, we meet together and we do have to hear, and we do have to go through the process, and there are people that we unfortunately have to say no to. So with that being said, if we open up this, again, Pandora box, what is it going to say to the whole entire community that we allowed to apply, that did follow directions and come, but yet we decided not to vote and give them their money? Yes, there are seven others or eight others that haven't collected. It just, this is what I have an issue with, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, this is taxpayer money that we are giving away. Yes, it is to help organizations, but again, this money comes from hotel motel tax. And we just sat there and heard Ms. Gale talk about, we're, you know, our numbers are okay, but here in two years, where are we at? We need to be paying our bills versus giving money away. And that's why I made the motion, our committee, to pull 50 grand for this next year from that, to either put it somewhere, I haven't decided yet or made that, but I did vote for that. So, that's my two cents, and I just want to make sure that we, if we do this for, one, we need to do it for everybody. We need to at least give them a deadline or somebody to say, hey, you can collect. But again, it's got to come from your fund balance. So, keep that in mind.
Commissioner Weathers?
I, Commissioner Brees answered most of the questions I was going to say, because I wanted to help Commissioner Hall by trying to get Greenville this money, because I was under the impression this was April money going for '25. This is from '23. So that's a difference. And you answered that question, so that's where I am with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Gentry?
According to the finance policy, if you, we can't, we're not allowed to basically give out grants from this body, according to the policy. And of course, according to Mr. Farland's policy guideline, however you want to say it, in the middle of the fiscal year, which is where we are right now. And it would be from this fiscal year money, not last year, which was granted to them from last year's money. So, I don't see how, if we're going to follow policy, we should not vote for this. That's all I'm saying. Even though they may deserve the money, and coming up this year, if you hold feet to the fire as far as the rules and regulations on how to apply and get the money, it may help other people also, the other eight organizations that didn't receive their money. Thank you.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes. Sir, I tend to lead with my heart and grace, and I agree with Mr. McFarland here. We're talking about $4,500. So if we all just took $180 out of our wallet, we could help the Greenville community.
Let's do it.
And I'm ready to do it. The...
You give 360?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll do 180. But it's true, it is. And I'm sure we've all been afforded our own grace because we didn't follow a policy or a rule, and yeah, it's out of this general fund, but they didn't spend the money last year, so that money went back into the bank. You know? And there's times when I haven't followed through in life and people gave me grace, you know? And it sounds like this small community center in Greenville, which is Blake's district, where if any community center was in their situation in our district, I'm sure we would stand up here and fight for them as well. And so, I'm going to support Blake in this, and Blake, if it doesn't pass, I'll give you 180 bucks.
Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Hall?
Just one last, I guess, suggestion. I don't know if it's something that we can legally do, this might be a question for Aaron or Mayor Jennings. What if we set up the policy for this committee that if you don't spend your money in a fiscal year, then if you're granted a, if you're given a grant again, then your remaining balance carries over into your new balance for the future. And then if you had, if that happens and you still don't spend it, then that automatically disqualifies you because you're not taking advantage of it. Maybe make that a policy. I mean, I'm just kind of brainstorming there. So, I don't know if that's a question Aaron can answer, or... I'm on that committee, so I'll try to make it happen. I don't think this works, but it can be done. I mean...
Mayor, you assigned a committee back several years ago to look at the nonprofit grants. I remember Adam Bannick being on that committee. Honestly, I don't remember who else was. Maybe they've all turned over. And, you know, I'm the only one who was on that committee. At that time, it was to set guidelines over a system that was far too loose, and it was the will of that committee not to allow these programs to grow. They wanted to hold them exactly where they were from a budget standpoint. There were two things that were done that were larger amounts, you know, $300,000 had been given away to one charity, and $25,000 had been given away to another, and there was probably a third, and there was a whole thing about how do we stop this? So, I have no problem. I want everybody to understand, and I have not spoken to a single commissioner in here saying, don't do this. It is a matter of what this body's will is, as to how they're going to deal with the nonprofits. If you're going to allow these things to roll forward, you're going to grow the budget by definition. These budgets are going to grow. Now, if they don't spend it down, like Commissioner Hall said, and the money goes away, again, that's something that health and welfare's got to keep up with, is that, okay, it's health and welfare in us, it's been two years and they haven't spent their money, so they don't get any money in year three. That's something we got to keep up with. I thought it better if you were going to consider something like this to basically say if they haven't, if they come within six months of the end of the year, you know, they've gone, instead of turning their money in by June 30, they come by December, that basically they could appeal to budget. And budget could grant it or not. And then the county commission would also have to vote on it. But as far as an automatic rollover, I mean, that's going to have to be something that would be worked into the budget. But it can be done.
Commissioner Costley? Last one I got.
I'm torn on this. I'm with Commissioner McFarland on the grant and grace and all that, but I'm also with Commissioner Fields on opening a Pandora's Box. So, I say that to say this, Blake, I'll give you 180 bucks.
Are we ready to vote?
160. Take 20 off of that.
Are you ready to vote?
He didn't go to Mount...
Please, please cast your vote. Please cast your vote. Mr. Marlowe? Mr. Keith? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Nine yes, 16 no.
Resolution fields. Do we go back into session? Hear a motion?
Don't move.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Marlowe, you're done, correct?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. I want to encourage everyone that can to come to the next budget workshop. Aaron spends a lot of time and effort putting this together, and it's very important, so please go.
Any old business to come for the body? New business? I have Commissioner Bowman?
Under desk, you will find... An invitation to the upcoming land use meeting. This will be the first in a series to gather public input on our future master plan for the land use for our county. And so, I would encourage you guys to do three things, please. Number one is please share this with your constituents. I would love for there to be no parking, no room at this event. Let's get as many people in our county involved and participating and sharing their voice and their vision for this county. So if you're on Facebook, if you have a newsletter, however you communicate with your constituents, please, 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 share this event. Secondly, I'm asking all 25 of us to please be in attendance at this event. This is our chance to hear directly from our constituents, constituents all over the county. Our districts vary greatly. Some of us are in more urban districts, some of us are in rural districts, and this is a great opportunity to hear how vastly different our county is in different areas. And number three, I just want to compel every one of you to please get involved in this land use plan. We've started some steering committee meetings. This will be the first of the series of public input meetings. Please get involved, please ask questions, please be versed in this. We're going to be asked to take a vote on this land use map and plan for our county. And I would dare say this term, this will probably be the most important work that the 25 of us do, is to pass a land use plan for this county. And there are groans every time we go out of session and we rezone land, and we debate how land should be used, and this is our opportunity to put a stamp on how we want land used in this county. And so, I just, I implore you, please be involved in this meeting and in future meetings we have for our land use plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Commissioner Fields?
I apologize to my fellow commissioners. There was an oversight in the minutes. He was on page seven, and it pertained to Judicial Commissioner Trevinia Holden. The minutes reflect that Commissioner Hall made the motion to deny, and when in fact it was Commissioner Chandler. This information was passed along to the county attorney, but I know he was focused on a Tennessee-Alabama game and probably overlooked it. But that needs to be corrected, that it was...
It was passed along to me, but I'll fall on my sword on it. It didn't get done. I thought it did, but it didn't. So, you go ahead and correct it. And if that's all it takes to beat Alabama every year, I'll fall on my sword.
Anything else to come for the body? Hear one more motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.